Yeah. We'll just wait and see if it's gonna screen.
Five of us are on it, clearly.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
District mission, together we engage, educate and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Would somebody make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patty, Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mark, would you like to begin?
I sure would, and had I known this day was gonna be as nice as it was outside, I probably wouldn't have scheduled this meeting for tonight. But, you know, the goal of the meeting is to have a good conversation of some of the challenges we're facing and some of the things we see. And also educate, you know, help educate new board members as far as, you know, how, kind of how the system works. And when we come to the board with requests, you kind of have a background of, you know, how things work. And also, if you're out in public, you get to ask questions about some of these topics, you know, you're just a little bit more wiser on some of the nuances of this. And so we're gonna talk about class sizes, we're gonna talk about the building schedules, and that's what Pam and Sarah both sent you a note because they both had previous commitments tonight. And Sarah said she will be here in a little later to ask questions or to answer any questions. Some of the programming concerns we have, and the programming concerns mostly are at the high school because of the bubble that's going through right now. And Shannon is ready to talk about that. And then Jody and I want to talk about the, well, I think we all want to talk about employee hiring and retention, some of the things that are happening to us out. We're seeing some new things happening that we really haven't been prepared for, and we need to start focusing on some of these issues there. But if you could pull up that, uh, let's see, where's I, that middle border comparison, uh, class size graph that I had out there. And there's a couple of concerning things that I have on that. When you look at that graph, and we'll discuss it in a second, the first thing is our JK numbers. We're sitting at sixty-five for next year, which I think the first year I was here, we were at around one hundred and ten or one hundred and twenty. Uh, we've seen a steady stream of that going down, and that's very concerning because now it's not just a glitch here and there, it's a trend. Uh, we do have about eight or nine kids that are, just haven't been processed through the whole system, so we do have a possibility of another ten. But, you know, these numbers are something that, we always keep an eye on them because as we've seen our class sizes go down significantly over the last, you know, four or five years. And when you look at, uh, what I put in there was looking at the elementary grades K through five, or JK through five, dropping from five sections to four sections. Just to give you an idea of what numbers look like comparatively across the middle border conference. You know, if we stay at five sections, we're probably the lowest in the conference. Uh, and just a little side note on some of these numbers, there's a few districts in there that, because of all the, these are COVID numbers. Because some of these districts have large homeschool populations, they don't know what's coming back next fall also. So some of the districts that are reporting very low class sizes, they're, uh, they're either using, they told us they're using ESAR money to drop class sizes down, or that the kids, they don't know what kids are coming back yet. But it gives you an idea of what's across the board. If we went to four sections, we'd probably be up amongst the highest. If we went to, kept at five, we're gonna be the lowest. So that's kind of the conundrum we're in right there, but we do have a couple of classes that really do drop down into that seventeen, eighteen range. And that's, so it's just, it's something we keep an eye on, uh, you know, all the time as far as for staffing. And what I'd like to have come out of this is some comfort level as far as sizes. You know, if we keep our, you know, our K, our pre-K, uh, kindergarten first grade at eighteen to twenty, uh, if you look at our second grade, twenty to twenty-two, third through fifth, twenty-two to twenty-four, if that's a palatable range, we know what to shoot at every year, uh, when we, when we look at staffing.
So do we have the numbers for Prescott and Amory?
Uh, we don't, Prescott, you know, I talked to them, we didn't get Prescott, so we, did we have Amory in here?
Amory's in our middle border conference.
I know, but I thought we had Amory in here.
So that, Amory's on the next spreadsheet, but not the class size. And I think we're most close in, I don't know, total number of students.
Right, we're very close with them, yeah. And us, you know, us still.
And Hudson and River Falls are not in the middle border conference?
No, not anymore, but they're comparative schools that we always get compared to with test scores and, you know, what have you.
Aye.
And, you know, and I could go wider to CISA schools also. Again, uh, just wanted to acclimate you to this, uh, you know, when we start seeing, you know, class sizes of seventeen, you know, that's where we should be looking at dropping a section. Now, the only reason I've been very apprehensive to touch anything with sections and class sizes, because we don't know what's gonna show up next year.
Aye.
And, uh, you know, regardless of what you do next year, you know, a little side note, homes are starting this September out here. And over the course of the next three years, there's gonna be three hundred homes out here. So it's, I don't think we're gonna be seeing kids for another three years though, at a, at a minimum, coming in here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
That twenty-seventeen birth year though, that was the lowest birth rate the US had in like thirty years. It's like, that small number of four, four Ks for next year, that makes sense because it's on trend with the entire country. The entire country's gonna have really low birth rates, like four K in this coming up school year, because the birth rates are like two percent less than ever, so.
In two thousand seventeen?
Yeah.
You don't happen to know off the top of your head what eighteen and nineteen were doing?
They increased, I know they increased in eighteen and nineteen, but seventeen was a huge drop in the birth rates. Really interesting data, a lot of it's.
So again, you know, if we had some targets, uh, and some of the districts do set those targets, they, you know, at the different grade age levels. Some of the things that we used to do, you know, wherever was, if we had surprisingly high numbers, rather than hiring a full FTE, we would hire like a half FTE and break down core subjects in some of the classes. Because some of the, some of the classes can handle twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, but not your core topic, you want them, you know, broken down. I mean, that was one strategy. One of the districts here, uh, you know, if they're over their twenty-four, they add a para, and if it goes to twenty-seven, you know, they'll add a FTE. Some of those guidelines are nice to have, that when we're looking at projections over the months, we can, you know, we can get a little tighter handle on it. And that everyone knows that also, that's what they can expect.
So it doesn't need board approval at that time, it's just a given?
Anything we're talking about does not need board approval.
No, no, I'm talking about the, um, River Falls, when they say add FTE at twenty-seven. So if they reach twenty-seven average, then they can just go ahead and hire enough?
They can get in, but it still needs board approval for the hire.
Okay.
For the hire. And we can put any nuances or anything into the mix that, you know, we want as qualifiers for. Again, it just helps, administration helps people in the classroom know that, you know, when we get to this point, here's where we're gonna get some relief, or here's where we're dropping a section or adding a section.
So I'm not clear on what you're asking the board. Are you asking us to set parameters for the future?
Yes. Yes, to consider, to have the discussion about considering to put these parameters on there. That here's, here's guidelines, rather than every year, if we come in with, it helps with consistency. So we have a set pattern of, you know, how we're going to operate. And these are discussions we have all the time, over looking at, uh, class sections and class sizes, what are we gonna maintain?
Is there a number that you're telling us is the eighteen to twenty-three range you're thought to?
You know, from what?
Shannon, is that, you know, and it's, hey, they like where we're at, that's kind of what I heard and read today.
Well, everyone loves all those class sizes they can handle.
Right, no, I agree.
It's where, financially, what can we handle down the road? And that's why I've been very, very, uh, haven't moved real quick on adding or doing anything because we don't know what our finances are. You know, if we were in, we were in severe cut mode, you know, you kind of see what we could do here to get us out of it, but we're not. You know, we're sitting okay, but those, having some specificity on what these class sizes will be really helps us in our projections and our planning. And, you know, the, what I've, if I'm looking at this graph and just what I've experienced in the past, let me, uh, pull mine up notes here. You know, so I was looking at eighteen to twenty students in the JK and kindergarten classes. Uh, first and second grade would be twenty to twenty-two, and third through fifth grade would be twenty-two to twenty-four.
Can you repeat that, Mark, eighteen to twenty?
Uh, eighteen to twenty students per, in the JK and kindergarten classes. First grade would be twenty to twenty-two, and third grade would be twenty-two to twenty-four. And then we could look at some strategies that if we get over that number, you know, how we would add, would we add a para? And again, this is all cost, there are different strategies with costs. You had an instructional para, you had a halftime teacher, you had another section. And once we get through this, all this COVID, this ESAR, we're gonna be back down to basic funding again. And to have some parameters like this, again, will really help, you know, making our recommendations, whether it's additions or reductions.
I remember several years ago when our kindergarten numbers, I don't think you were here, Mark. Our kindergarten numbers were very high, and we ended up adding a kindergarten teacher in October. Do you remember this, Trish? And there was a, um, Tammy Wishard was on the board then. And I remember her saying at the board meeting, because all the kindergarten teachers were at that meeting, and she said, she thanked them for coming because it made her job so much easier as a board member to get their input. And they definitely did not want to add a paraprofessional to their classrooms rather than get a teacher. They were willing to redistribute the kids into five sections than, and add a teacher, make an extra section. Way more preferred than adding a para, because they said adding a para doesn't address the issue. So I have that, um, input to offer.
And again, if we, depending where budgets are, you have to do different things. And obviously, the first, on any situations, they had a, had a staff certified teacher. But again, there's strategies if we were strapped or not. So again, those are just strategies. I just wanted you to be aware of some of the things that we're wrestling with when we look at staffing. And if we can look at these type of parameters, uh, these are still, these are still very reasonable class sizes.
Can you, um, can we get the Prescott and Amory numbers?
Yeah, I can expand this list for you too, if that would help. And I think a couple of these need to be cleaned up a little bit because Trish and I were talking, but her circle of people, uh, are saying that, you know, because the super tenants gave me this, these numbers. And I'm assuming that they gave me the right numbers. Trish is finding out that there's one district that these are not the right numbers. So, uh, again, I'm just talking tonight in concept, but if there's more information you want before we walk down this road any further, I can sure expand this list.
Yeah, and so I had no idea that that was, that this was what you were looking for from this tonight, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So if you could put writing, kind of give us some examples or something, what you're, what kind of flexibility you're looking for, I, I would find.
Okay, no, that's, I just, again, information, just want to start the conversation, nothing, nothing on here tonight needs action.
Okay.
Again, we're just informing and having a discussion about that. That's why we wanted to retreat, so we could just kick it around and, you know, what's that?
I think that eighteen and twenty-three that you've kind of put out, because we know what it's gonna do, it's a little bit, we don't want to be up at your twenty-four, gotta hire somebody. We're at seventeen, we gotta get rid of someone, so I mean, I think when you consistently see it go above, I think it's time to add it or below.
I don't know, how, Trish, how flexible has it been in the past with, again, just, I haven't been here to know what you've done as far as switching sections in the past?
It depended on money, because I remember sections of twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
You know, I don't remember them that high.
In the middle school?
And, yeah, and I don't know anything about the middle school, I can only speak to the elementary. You know, I taught there for several years, and it was just always a play with numbers, when you only have one building and you've got.
Limited space.
Limited space, and class sizes that go from some big ones to some little ones, it just always was a play on numbers, what made them all sense. And so you were constantly shifting, you hoped to remain as stable as possible, and it was just where, where the numbers fell.
Well, and I feel like that's what, um, Sarah's mouth said, you know, basically that, you know, they, they look at it every year and determine where they need.
Yep, most of the time you keep the younger grades smaller, and you know you need kids to be reading by grade three, and you, you know, you can put a few more kids usually in the, the older they get, but you also know the bodies are bigger, and you sometimes take behavior into consideration, because sometimes you know you've got grade levels that can be a little bit trickier for various reasons. So it really was the judgment of, of the professionals in the building, keeping the numbers reasonable as, as the class sizes moved up.
And why we're talking about the elementary now is because our elementars are dipping, and middle school's staying the same, and high school's getting the bubble down, and that's what Shannon will talk about, um, in a little, in a little bit here. So, you know, if, if these numbers continue, this, if this trend continues, we're gonna have to make some decisions at the elementary.
You know, based on what you've sent us, I highlighted the grade levels, what I thought an appropriate section would be. And based on these numbers, I thought I would go with five sections for all the grades except for junior kindergarten and three.
No.
And grade five, I think is borderline. But my understanding is this, well, Pam's not here, but Trish, you probably know, uh, next year's fifth graders are this year's fourth graders, and there are five sections of fourth grade, correct?
Yes.
And so you're taking a group of kids from five sections to four sections, and my understanding, without being, trying to be as general as possible, is that, um, this particular group of kids may benefit from being in smaller class sizes.
I am, I cannot speak to that. Neither can I.
And that would be a discussion between you and Pam. As far as strategizing on that.
We've not had that discussion.
But you've bounced back and forth in your sections.
Yeah.
Quite often.
Yep, we've gone four sections, five, seven, four, I mean, it truly depends on if we're in the ranges or not.
And they do the same thing at the middle school or at the elementary school?
There have been times that our second grade has been larger than our third, or our second grade's been larger than our first grade, because they've taken into consideration the characteristics of, you know, the special needs of a certain grade level.
Yeah, I'm just talking, taking a look at the overall class sizes coming up and saying, okay, you taught fourth grade last year, now you can add your third grade, third grade class?
Say that you taught.
Yeah, we have had staff.
Staff move, yeah.
Levels with a larger group of kids.
Or floated with the classroom, you know, we had teachers that have done that, that have taught first grade, and then they went with their class to second grade. Yep, lots of flexibility.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make you aware of this, and I'll, I can expand the data on this in a little.
I'm just gonna say, I think we're right on the edge of the five section, obviously with that ninety, repeated nineties. But I sure wouldn't want to cut to four, knowing that, I mean, I don't think that's good practice either. I think we're, like you say, we're sitting pretty good, but if something were to dip you more, I think we'd have to look at something. But right now, I personally think we're, seems pretty good.
I would keep it as far as we can. I, I would keep it there as long as we can, but again, there's gonna come a time, I just.
But junior kindergarten right now is four.
Pardon?
We have four sections of junior kindergarten right now. And I, well, I don't know, I think it would be reasonable for third, I wish Pam will hear, uh, Trish.
I will not vote for third grade.
You wouldn't vote for third grade being four sections?
Nope.
Why is that? You had a hard third grade year?
I had a hard seventh grade year. Tough as a year in school.
No, I, yeah, I don't think we'd make that adjustment, I mean, especially with people coming back next year. We might be up over ninety then, and then we're back to twenty kids in a class.
And that's a caveat, we just don't know what's gonna come back.
No.
In our door next year. But again, just for conversation's sake, I just wanted you to see what it is and see what we deal with as far as staffing. We've got the declining numbers in the elementary, middle school's holding its own, uh, high school's the one that's really getting the squeeze on, and again, Shannon will talk about that, so. But I'll do some work on this, so it's a little clearer.
I sent Sharia a text a while ago at six forty-three saying, can you hear us? She just texted, no, I'll be there in five minutes.
She can't hear us?
Just, you know.
Okay, um, we can move on to, um, the next piece that I want to chat about here, and that is, uh, about building schedules, just a real brief overview of, uh.
Do you have a handout on this?
Uh, just what those two handouts we had here, and it's real fairly simple with the elementary, I don't know if we, uh, Trish, I don't know, you know more about the elementary schedule? Just a five section or, you know, a five section schedule, uh, rotation. Sarah, do you want to talk, you, you handed out your sheet, do you want to talk about the middle school at all, or it's pretty?
So we run a fourth block day, so our kids have ELA and math every day for somewhere between seventy-three and seventy-eight to eighty minutes a day. And then our students have science and social studies every other day for seventy-three to seventy-eight minutes at a time. And then their fourth block of the day is their specials classes, which varies slightly from grade level to grade level. We have a requirement with fifth grade being identified as more of an elementary, we have to make sure we're providing enough FIED minutes each week for the kids, so, um, they get a little more FIED in fifth grade. We have been able to, over the last couple of years, also offer more FIED time in sixth grade, which has been a really nice benefit. All of our kids get recess in the middle of the day, so they have eighteen to twenty minutes of playtime, and they play hard. Um, our brand new playground is very well-used and, and loved by the kids. We also have band and choir, and then opposite of that, um, band and choir time is our foundations time, where kids do twenty minutes of silent reading. And, um, then there's twenty minutes of time for them to do a little project, homework, if a teacher has a special, something they're working on with the kids. And then we do have our intervention, thirty minutes of time, uh, where we can help kids with reteaching, math intervention, reading intervention. And we start each day with fifteen minutes of advisory time, uh, where it's a small group of students with one teacher in order to build and foster relationships. So we use our distorted circles, we make community building circles, uh, that's where our character ed works. And every Wednesday is workout Wednesday, where there's a different activity that a grade level does, and the kids really enjoy that. So when I look to staff, I do have more ELA and math teachers in the building than I do science and social studies teachers, just given the fact that we have more kids taking that on an everyday basis. With a little bit of, um, less time that science and social studies get, I have been able to, when classes align the right way, to bust them into a slightly smaller section. So like next year's eighth grade, which is a five-section class, will actually have six sections of science and social studies, so the classes are a little bit smaller. Um, we've been able to have that flexibility with the schedule, that's not always possible. On a four, four sk, on a four, um, grade level schedule, and there's four classes, uh, then it's four on every other day. So it's just, it's a bit of a puzzle, because I do have one ELA teacher that teaches Spanish for my seventh graders, and then, um, all of my science teachers teach a section of eighth grade STEM. We share, Shannon and I share a tech ed teacher, who's only available half the day to me. So in order to get our kids to have some science, technology piece, um, my science teachers created a STEM course, so the eighth graders have that opportunity to take that at eighth graders before they get to the high school. So, um, yeah, that's, that's how we look. And, um, the kids get to choose in some of the eighth grade between family, consumer, science and art as they're elective. So some elect to take the same one both years, some elect to take one of each, um, and they get that opportunity to, to make that choice at that grade level.
Sarah, I, I don't have the numbers here, what are your class sizes? Just the entire grade level, like?
For high grade level?
Yeah.
So next year's eighth grade will be, I think, right now, it's gonna be at one nineteen. Next year's seventh grade is at one oh seven, sixth grade is at, now that might be wrong, seventh grade is at one oh one. Sixth grade will be at one oh seven, and my incoming fifth graders, I think, are ninety-seven right now.
Oh, that, you, we have a piece of paper?
I think you have that, don't you? Yeah. Like, I hope it was on there. I don't have it in front of me, pulled out, so.
Ninety-eight for fifth grade.
Sure.
One ten for sixth.
Okay.
And one oh one for seventh, and one twenty for eighth.
Great. We have a couple of kids coming out of homeschool that have already contacted us that were at home this year, so those numbers are in there.
Oh, wonderful.
So.
And you've got the sections here too?
Yes. Okay, good. I was, I didn't know how late I was going to be today, so soccer one, basically, so that was good.
So, um, so Shannon's gonna talk about the high school, and I think, why don't you just come up, because I got you tied into the next one with programming and staffing patterns. And that's all yours, so you might as well just come up and take the stage.
While she's setting up, we are live streaming with good sound, by the way we go.
Here, talk about your schedule, sorry. Shannon, did we talk about your schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. I think we're ready. Okay, I'm ready. So, um, I will give a little bit of an overview of our schedule as well, but, um, kind of the bulk of what I want to give you some information about is, um, some of the current staffing issues we're running into in the high school due to, um, I would say, a silver lining of, um, some things that are happening right now is that our population at the high school is not declining, um, it's actually doing the opposite right now, which is great. But it's causing some pinch spots in, um, two specific spots that I'm going to talk about. So, um, I want to give you a little bit of an overview of our schedule, and then I'm going to talk specifically about kind of the two staffing requests that Mark and I have had a lot of conversations about, Trish and I, Trish, Mark and I, Trent, Trish, Mark and I, really over the last two years. So this isn't something that necessarily just came up in the last week, we've been monitoring numbers, enrollment, um, class registration, and just kind of seeing overall in the building, um, where we got some spots that we believe that we need more support. One of those I'm going to talk about is in our career and tech ed department, um, and adding a one point O FTE in that department. And then I'm going to speak, um, quite extensively on taking a look at our current, uh, athletic director, assistant principal position, which right now is split into, well, it's one position, but it's point five, point five, which is obviously. well, it's one position, but it's point five, point five, which is obviously Trent, and that's what he's doing. Um, and talk about some rationale we have in terms of why we believe that we've reached the point where we need to take a look at splitting that position into a one point O full-time activity athletic director for grade six through twelve, and then having a full-time assistant principal at the high school. So those will be the two things specifically that I'm going to talk about today. As always, not that I have to read this to you, and I certainly won't, but this always brings us back to our why. When we had discussions about staffing, we had discussions about programming, um, how it's impacting students, this is where we start. And I feel like our strategic plan, which I will get into a little bit more detail later as well, um, is probably the strongest rationale that we have in terms of why we believe we've, we've reached this point, in terms of taking a look at addressing some staffing at the high school. Um, so, kind of cliff notes here in terms of where we've been, um, and this is really specific to the schedule. Um, so prior to the eighteen, nineteen school year, uh, the high school went through, um, I would say, a variety of kind of trial and error in terms of, um, schedules that were being used at the high school. All, any master schedule you use has pros and cons, one is not better or worse than the other. Um, but, over the course of, um, experiencing with some schedules with like the six-period day, seven-period day, the block schedule, um, this was before I was the principal. We got to a point in seventeen, eighteen where staff in particular was really vocal about, we want to look at something different because our kids are missing out on opportunities. So we have kids at that time that were leaving the high school, not being able to participate in all of the courses that we have to offer. Um, and we're leaving a bit, um, I would say some frustrated in terms of, um, a six-period day is a very tight schedule. It does not allow you necessarily a whole lot of above and beyond opportunities for electives. Again, there's lots of pros for a six-period day, lots of high schools run six-period days. But in terms of some of the vision, some of the things that we were talking about in the building, um, we spent the entire seventeen, eighteen school year still using a six-period day, but doing a full year of research in terms of what do we think in terms of a master schedule is going to match our vision and our why. So it was really grounded in the strategic plan, really grounded in when our kids leave here, what do we want an S H S graduate to be able to, once they walk across that stage, be ready for, which we know is all kinds of things, right? Every kid in our building is not going to go to a four-year school, every kid in the building isn't going to go to a two-year school, some may head right out and head to work. Um, so we want to make sure we are setting up conditions to be able to prepare kids for whatever their next step was. Which led us to eighteen, nineteen, which was the first year of our flex mod schedule. Um, some of you I know have heard me talk about this a lot, some of you might be, um, brand-new information. Uh, but looking at that schedule, um, really that was driven by our staff in terms of determining the level of flexibility that a schedule like that has, really allowing us to move away from a one-size-fits-all kind of factory model in terms of how school typically is executed. Um, and really being able to put students in the driver's seat of their educational path. Um, lots of voice and choice, if you ever walk through our halls at any point during the day, not this year with COVID, but any other time, you would see that our building is not traditional in terms of there's never a time during the day when kids are all sitting in a classroom at the same time and the hallways are quiet. There's always a murmur, there's always some buzz and some busyness around the building, because again, that's very purposeful. And we feel like that better mirrors, um, kind of the world that kids are gonna enter when they leave our building. Um, so in addition to making sure that whatever kids need in terms of that academic focus, based off of their path and their goals, when they leave, we also want to make sure that we're bringing a focus to personal success skills that we want kids to be able to develop and experience, have experience with when they're with us. So things like time management, things like organization, things like communication, self-advocacy, those are must-have skills when you were kind of working through a schedule like we have. Um, and we have kids that need a little bit more support than others, and we provide a lot of opportunity for kids to be able to make choices throughout the day. As you can imagine, in a building of five hundred teenagers, there are times when kids don't make perfect choices, and so we help kids kind of work through that to be able to build some of those skills. So, um, I was hoping actually by this time in, you know, by this school year, which would be finishing year three of our flex mod schedule, that we'd be able to provide you a lot of really good data regarding how is it working, right? We have a lot of anecdotal data in terms of the ways we believe that this is positively impacting students and staff. But we really have only had one year so far of full uninterrupted implementation, which was eighteen, nineteen. Last year, we hit the shutdown and that kind of threw everything into a whirlwind. And now this year, I would say certainly is not a great representation of, um, of our master schedule without a large degree of interruption. So, there's gonna be some more, um, certainly some more dialogue about this as we hopefully get a little bit more back to normal, but I would say as a whole, we feel really good about what we're doing, we feel really good about some of the results that we're seeing from kids. The feedback now that we're getting from students once they've left here, and telling us kind of their experience once they're gone of, oh my gosh, I'm really glad that I was able to learn this skill, or I have kids in my dorm that have never had to experience flex time, they don't know what to do when they have two hours off in between a class and those kinds of things. So, um, certainly a lot more to come in terms of our schedule, but at least wanted to give you, um, for some of you a review, some of you may be brand-new information about kind of what we're doing at the building. So, um, looking at our enrollment in the building, um, so I gave you some historical data starting with seventeen, eighteen, um, through twenty twenty-one, and obviously you can see where we're at, and then I gave a projection for next school year. And that projection is based off of the fact that we have a smaller freshman class entering, a large senior class leaving, and then also, um, making a prediction based off of our typical enrollment trends throughout the summer. Um, as Sarah mentioned, we also have, I would say, a large handful of students that we believe are going to be returning back to the building. Um, and so I gave kind of my best guess in terms of communication I've had with families about approximately what that number might be. Um, which puts us at, again, a projected number of four eighty-five coming into next school year. Uh, but again, kind of looking here, you can see historically over the last couple of years, um, which is a great thing, we continue to bump our numbers up in the building, which in, in turn is kind of causing the, the pinch that I'm gonna talk about here. All right, so, um, looking at a request for more staffing is based on a couple things, and this will be a little bit specific to each of the departments that I'm gonna talk about. But, one of the biggest pieces right now with our, um, within our CTE department is that we have, I would say at this point, by the time kids leave, um, hundreds of students that are missing out on specific academic and career pathway opportunities, um, because they just simply cannot get into classes because of the registration numbers and the amount of FTE that we have within that department. Many of the classes the kids are not able to take are tied to college credit, they're articulated classes through W I T C. The kids, if, over the course of, you know, two or three years, potentially looking at sophomore year through senior year, um, they continually try to get into these classes and it just, we have to have small sections, we have caps on things, and I'll kind of talk a little bit about that. And if we kind of go back to, again, our strategic plan and looking at our result statements, that would be in direct opposition to what we say that we really want our kids to be able to experience by the time they leave us, um, as seniors. Um, I'll also talk a little bit more about the need that we've identified over the last three years in terms of added support to be able to lift the system. Um, we don't have instructional coaches, we don't have interventionists, essentially in terms of being in the classroom for instructional support, it's me. And I'm gonna talk a lot about how that gets impacted and the overall impact that potentially has on supporting teachers and student achievement, when I'm not able to do some of those things on a consistent basis, based off of, um, how our current structure is set up with an A D A P position that is split. Um, and again, I'm gonna dig a little bit more for you into the strategic plan, result statements, and how these things tie together in terms of our why. So I'm gonna start with our, uh, career and tech ed department. So, just giving you a little bit of an overview of our current staffing that we have in the department right now. Um, Ryan Harrick, as Sarah said, he is split halftime between me and Sarah. Um, so I get him in the morning, Sarah gets him in the afternoon, Ryan takes care of our primarily, uh, classes that we run in our woodshop. Becky Olson, she certainly teaches more than just computer graphics, but in terms of looking at career and technical education, that's why computer graphics is the only class up there. She has a full teaching load and teaches drawing and painting and sculpture and jewelry and those kinds of things, but I wanted to focus specifically on our career and tech ed classes. Um, Eric Olson, uh, teaches two project lead-the-way classes, he also leads our, um, any classes we have in our metal shop and is also part of our academy. Um, Jen Sutton also teaches project lead-the-way class and leads all of our business courses and also is a part of our academy. And then Kelly Emerson, uh, leads our family and consumer science classes. Um, she teaches a college and the schools class, which is a, a class that we have a partnership with the U of M. Um, and she also oversees a combination of our supervised work experience, our youth apprenticeship program, and, uh, in tandem helps run our A C P, uh, program, which is mandated by the state. So I'm gonna dig into this a little bit further specifically, uh, with Jen and Kelly. Because that is where the biggest pinch right now is happening within our courses and our registration and their FTE, um, which I'll talk about here. So I want to just bring this to your attention here, when I talk about the strategic plan and digging a little bit further into some of our result statements, and, um, kind of ignoring this top one here, which has to do with community ed, really looking at these last four bullet points here. Um, this speaks directly to why we have a need right now for basically amping up the courses that we are offering, and again, the availability for those courses to our kids within that department. Um, I'm certainly not gonna read all of this for you word for word, but it talks about community involvement, it talks about partnerships, providing diverse opportunities for mentoring. Um, it talks about students being engaged in service learning projects, it talks about, again, partnership within our community. Um, all of these things right now are happening on a very limited basis, when it's happening, it's awesome, and there's some great things that are happening. But right now, looking at the need and really kind of the voice of our students in terms of what they are looking for in our building, um, right now I would say overall, this is an area that we need to be able to beef up, which we believe some increased FTE will be able to do. Um, I know this is wordy, so just work with me here, I went through these slides five hundred times, I did not know a better way to do this, just to make sure that you have all the information. So I'm gonna start with Jen Sutton in particular, so, um, at one point in our business department, there were two point O FTEs in that department. Once the schedule got moved to a block, which inherently happens with the block schedule, you don't necessarily need as many people, because you are now limiting a bit the courses that are being offered due to the nature of that schedule. Again, not good or bad, that's just the nature of a block schedule. So with that schedule, student elective options were reduced, so that department went down to a one point O FTE, which is Jen, okay? So over the course of the last four year now, years now, um, Jen has had to revamp, um, all of her business courses to be able to really kind of figure out what is she going to offer, and how does that align not only to our strategic plan, but to our vision of making sure the kids have access to college credit. And not just U of M four-year college credit, but also articulated classes through W I T C. So she has went through and articulated almost every course that she teaches now, not quite everyone, but almost everyone. So, three years ago, when we started to feel a little bit of a pinch with her schedule, she developed and started offering consumer ed, which is a required course for all of our seniors to take. Um, so every senior in our building has to take that class, she started, or started offering that course in the summer. Um, that became a necessity that we're thankful she was willing to do, because she's not obligated to teach summer school, to be able to help reduce some of those sections during the school year to open up more sections for something else, okay? Every year, and I'm gonna show you some numbers here in a second, we are turning kids away from specific classes that she teaches that have some of the highest request rate in the entire building. Microsoft Office, her accounting class, her entrepreneurship class, and all those classes are articulated. So what I'm gonna show you in a second here are the numbers and just kind of watching those, or those classes and the registration increase, um, has been actually quite amazing to watch, because number one, kids love taking classes with Jen, which is fantastic. The kids are seeing the value and the benefit of being able to walk away from those classes with college credit in hand. And it's different than an AP class, for example, because there's not a test that you have to take, you have to meet certain competency and there's the credit, right? That students don't have to pay for. So another important piece here, so Jen just finished year one, we've been able to kind of piece some things together where she hasn't had to teach an overload yet. And this year, we finally reached that point where, um, we were gonna have to drop some significant classes, potentially even our project lead-the-way course, which is something that we absolutely desperately do not want to do. Um, and so she was willing to teach an overload. Again, overloads by teachers are voluntary, I can't make a teacher, um, teach an overload. But that means throughout the day then, that she on given days loses prep. Um, she does not have as much what we call resource time built into her schedule, like many other teachers have. Um, there's days where she gets a thirty-minute lunch and that's it. Um, and most of those days, she's working right through that anyway. Um, so, I'm gonna take a look at just some of the numbers here from eighteen, nineteen through our current request for next school year. Um, and if you look at, again, consumer ed at the top here, um, that is a class that kids now can take either in the summer or during the school year. We never know how many kids are going to take us up on the opportunity to take it during the summer, so it's a little bit of a, a guessing game in terms of how many sections she might have to teach during the school year. Um, her entrepreneurship class, and if you just kind of look here, it went from eighteen to thirty to fifty-one, and now we're at the point where only seniors can take that class, uh, which can get a little bit tricky. Um, accounting, you can look at those numbers, twenty-one, thirty-one, or twenty-nine, thirty-one, seventy-five, now we're up to eighty-six kids that want to take her accounting class. Um, Microsoft Office, same thing, sixty-six, sixty-four, one twenty-seven, a hundred and forty-five kids this year, two months ago when we did our registration, um, for, uh, wanting to take that class. Project Lead The Way, we've had to restrict now which kids can take that class as well. And sometimes, you know, this impacts, it, when we do this, this means kids potentially might not be able to take it at all. Because we're working with kids on creating a pretty tight path in terms of their courses throughout, over the course of four years. So this can throw a wrench into, wait a minute, I wanted to take entrepreneurship my junior year, because my senior year I'm planning on taking courses at UW River Falls. Or I have a whole nother outline of classes I want to take senior year, because we have other classes we only run every other year. It's a big kind of puzzle, but when you start putting restrictions like this in there, uh, that can mess up a lot of things for a student in terms of courses they had hoped to take. Um, we want to mention global business as well. Um, over the course of time here, we, we actually don't even offer this class anymore, and Jen and I were just talking about this not too long ago. She's been able to kind of infuse some pieces of that class into, um, uh, entrepreneurship, but because of not having enough FTE, the class was not able to run here, and we just frankly, at this point, can't, um, can't fit it into her schedule anymore. It's a class that she would love to bring back, again, I think you can see the relevancy of, of a global business class, again, back to our strategic plan. Uh, but that's something that we've had to cut completely out of her schedule. Um, okay, now I'm gonna move on to Kelly Emerson. So, over the last four years, Kelly basically is trying to run two full-time programs out of her classroom. Um, not only the family consumer science classes, which are our foods classes, um, you know, all of the things that kind of, uh, go in that realm, and then also all of her work-based learning classes. So, she is finishing year three of teaching an overload. You know, ideally we want teachers at five sections, she's at seven, sometimes eight, she's been at nine. Um, and that definitely means there is no prep and no lunch built into her schedule when we get that tight. We had a job shadowing program that we've been trying to get off the ground that we can no longer run, because there's literally no more room in her schedule or no time in her day frankly, to be able to do that. Um, which we believe is an important part of our work-based learning program, so we're trying to bring that back. Um, academic and career planning, A C P is mandated by the state of Wisconsin, and we really have nobody right now that's kind of manning the store. Kelly and, and that FTE in that department would be the perfect person to be able to do that. Um, so we are kind of checking the boxes the best that we can to be compliant with doing what we have to do, but in terms of really having a robust, rigorous A C P program, um, we're just not, not there because we've run out of bodies to do it. As I said, looking back, you know, a few slides here, looking at our strategic plan, we are missing some major components here that I think are big misses within our building that not only impact students there, but impact our community, by not being able to, um, basically run both of these programs uh, with the fidelity that I think we could be able to. So let's take a look at a few of her classes, so, um, everything on this slide really is part of her family consumer science. Foods, intro to foods, meal management, interior design, um, infant toddler, that is an articulated class, C I S teaching, that's the U of M class. Um, and then a food science class that we used to run, and actually that used to be run congruently between, uh, her and our science department, so doing some interdisciplinary things there. Um, and that class is one we had to take off the books. But again, you can see some of the accommodations that we've had to make, you can see how the numbers have been increasing. Um, meal management is a class now that we've, you know, kind of went to running every other year when we can. Interior design, you know, went from seventeen, we didn't run it for two years because we couldn't fit it in, now it's up to ninety-three for this year. You can see that these classes are classes that kids in our building want to desperately be able to take. And just looking at these numbers here, we know that kids are not gonna be able to. Even if you say, how about next year? Because sometimes there's not a next year, depending on how we end up, uh, kind of functioning with these classes. Um, I want to talk about, you know, the, the work-based learning part a little bit more specifically. So, anytime we have a student signed up for supervised work experience, which is kind of also known as school-to-work, right? Kids get credit for being able to, um, if they have a job and meet some certain criteria. Um, our youth apprenticeship and our job shadowing, um, all of those require anybody who's overseeing those programs to go do job site visits, right? Um, and so, looking at Kelly's schedule during the day, right now in her schedule, she has one mod throughout the week, I believe, that we have dedicated to school-to-work. And obviously, one mod during an entire week is not enough time to be able to go out and visit kids. So Kelly right now, um, is finding time on days like today, finding time on weekends, finding time at night to go find kids at their job, because she's required to do job site visits and check in with employers and those kinds of things. Um, and that is not a sustainable model for her, or anybody. But, looking at some of our numbers, um, we have actually had to start almost turning kids away from registering for these courses, because we know there is not enough bodies or time in the day for her to get to everybody because of what else, what else she has on her plate, right? Youth apprenticeship, so we started to gain a little bit of momentum here. Um, we are now basically discouraging kids when we are looking at having kids. We are now basically discouraging kids when we are looking at having kids sign up for youth apprenticeship, because there is not enough time for her to be able to oversee that, which I'll talk about in a minute, which I think is a huge miss. And our job shadowing program, we tried to run it for two years. There was not time in her schedule, and now when we have kids register, it's not even on the registration sheet anymore, which we would love to bring back. So youth apprenticeship is a really important one, because every student that we have signed up for our youth apprenticeship program receives between 400, we receive between $400 and $500 for each student. So it is a grant-funded program through the state of Wisconsin. A portion of that money that we get from students can be used for salary and fringe, which is an important part of the conversation, which I'll talk about here in a minute. No limit on how many kids can be enrolled in that program, and students that we have involved can also be claimed on another grant, which we receive more money for. And so the state of Wisconsin basically is saying like, hey, the more people you can get involved in these, we're going to give you money to be able to run these programs. We have schools in our conference that, when you talk about youth apprenticeship, have 200 and 300 kids sign up. We literally do not have the bodies and the time to be able to do that right now, which again, is a huge miss, specifically because of the amount of money that we get back for every kid that we have involved in that program. Okay, so I want to show you some budgetary implications that have happened over the last couple of years here. So for Kelly, as I mentioned, she's been teaching an overload for multiple years. As I mentioned, overload is voluntary. You know, she is frankly, running out of steam to be able to keep up at this rate. You can kind of look at the dollars here on your own. I wrote a predicted amount, because right now she is scheduled to teach an overload again next school year. A predicted amount for next school year. Jen, as I said, just finished her first year of teaching an overload. She right now is scheduled again to teach an overload again for next school year, which is why I put her predicted cost there. So I gave you the total here, just as a reference. This is about what a new teacher costs coming in. I get it's not apples to apples, because this would be a cost every single year versus these costs every single year. When we talk about being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, I think this is an extremely important slide. Not only from a, certainly from a dollars and cents point of view, but I really want to convey to you that these two staff members are running out of energy to be able to maintain this pace. And what's going to happen is eventually they're going to say, I can't teach an overload anymore, and we're going to start losing even more courses and programs that we don't want our kids to miss out on. So that's kind of the motivation there behind kind of the big Y, okay? I'll maybe stop there for that particular part, and happy to answer questions that you have before I move on to kind of part two.
For the overloads, are those, are those dollars actually paid to the instructors for the, for the extra?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
It's not just an estimate on what it costs to?
No, this is what?
We actually do pay that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Would you mind going back to, there was a slide about Kelly that the youth, no.
This one?
No, the youth apprenticeship and the?
Yep.
Can you tell me, what is the difference between supervised work experience, youth apprenticeship?
Yep.
And job shadowing? You know, if we get so much grant money for youth apprenticeship, why don't we just do that and get, instead of having all those kids in supervised work experience?
Sure. So each one is a little bit different. So job shadowing is the easiest one. This is just an in-house opportunity that we offer for our kids, where we create community partnerships of saying, hey, you want to be able to job shadow someone at HVAC, let's hook you up with that and we'll give you some credit for it, right? So that's just more of an in-house opportunity that we want for kids, right? So youth apprenticeship, you have to, the job that you have has to meet certain criteria that's outlined by the state of Wisconsin. It can't just be any job. So we have some kids that certainly meet both, which is awesome, and then we, yep, then we can check kind of both boxes. We have some kids that have a job, that that job may not necessarily meet the criteria for youth apprenticeship.
Right.
So that they, they work together as much as possible, but we can't necessarily say, well, let's just get rid of one and just do the other one, right? Because there are some times, I would say lots of times, where kids have a job that it just doesn't meet the criteria of being able to be qualified as a youth apprenticeship job.
Well, there's an hour requirement too.
Yep.
So there you have to put in an immense amount of hours over a certain amount of time. It's often over two summers. So the kids that are in youth apprentice have to fulfill certain requirements. There's certain application. There has to be a certain agreement with the employer.
The checkpoints look different.
And it's, and it really is over almost two summers of time. The amount of hours that they have to fulfill and be part of that.
Right, but if we have all these kids who want to do it, and we're limiting it to only four and seven, why not limit the supervised work experience numbers instead, and allow more kids to do youth apprenticeship? Is it because there's not? I mean, it seems like you're telling us that there are kids who want to do youth apprenticeship, but can't. So I'm wondering, why are we not limiting the numbers in supervised work experience rather than youth apprenticeship? Do you see what I mean?
I hear what you're saying. I would like to not have to limit any of it. If I, right? I mean, it just, every year, it depends on which, the jobs the kids are choosing. Again, with youth apprenticeship, the amount of time commitment that that puts on the instructor is significant. And so we, at some point, we had to figure out, where are we going to make some concessions, right? And so this is what the numbers look like right now. We don't, we're not happy about it. We want to be able to offer all these programs to the fullest extent possible, but if I, it'd be easier probably for you to understand if I, if I gave you a full outline of what kinds of jobs we're kind of talking about here, because it's, there are certain criteria that kids have to meet for youth apprenticeship that they don't have to meet for supervised work experience.
Right, yeah.
Right, and so many of our kids rely on supervised work experience for elective credit. I mean, there's, there's lots of other kind of pieces behind that that make it, I would say, advantageous for, for students within the building. So I'd like to do it all.
The apprenticeship also requires more work on behalf of the employer?
Yep. Right, we have some employers that'll say, no thanks.
Do some?
If that's happened.
Sorry.
Yep.
Included in these three categories, is there, I'm just curious if there are opportunities within the trades or mechanic type work or things like that?
Yep. Yep. Yep.
So supervised work experience can be anything?
Yes.
Youth apprenticeship is like in the olden days when there were really apprenticeship programs like at American Heist?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard from people in the community that would really like to see opportunities for our students within the trades and mechanic type things, hands-on, for the kids that really enjoy hands-on work. So.
Yep.
Yeah.
Agreed. Agreed.
Could you give an estimate of what one youth apprenticeship, the time that it takes the instructor for one youth apprenticeship kid versus how many supervised work experience kids? Is that even possible?
It, it depends on the job. It depends on the employer. It depends on the availability of when a, of when Kelly can actually go to a site visit. Sometimes it works out great. It can happen during the day. Sometimes if it's a job that's at night, I mean, there's, there's so many factors that go into each individual job. That'd be hard, but. Okay, other questions with this part? I know it's a lot to take in, so I'm just trying to give you a 50,000-foot.
Is there a rough number of what an apprenticeship brings back in grants? Is it per student? Is it?
So it's 400 to 500 per student.
Per year?
Yep. Yep. Yeah. I know some schools in our conference are funding entire, entire FTEs just with that grant money, because they have so many people involved.
Is there a limit on the grant money per year?
No.
Or is it?
Nope.
But there's a limit on the time that teachers have to do it?
Yeah. Yeah.
And the cost for the teacher was a basic teacher with no experience?
Yep, I just threw in a, just a, just to give you an idea.
Most, I mean, is he looking at a business teacher to kind of take over this part in the business? The Microsoft Office and that stuff, that specialty that you're looking for, or what is?
Yes, I have a whole slide on that. But yeah, so, don't let me forget, but yes, I'm going to, I'm going to get to that, because I do have kind of my home run of what that would look like.
And you're going to make this available to us, right?
Yeah, I didn't know you didn't have it, but sure.
Yeah, please.
Great, yep, yep.
I don't see very well, so.
I know. Well, I have a couple, my next few slides, it's even smaller, so I'll try, okay. All right, so I'm trying to go through fast. I know this is a lot of information here, but want to talk a little bit about this particular position right now. So as I mentioned before, we currently have an assistant principal, athletic activity director as one position, one FTE. Obviously, split by one person, which is Trent. To give you a little bit of historical view, so prior to 1718, that position did not carry any, I would say, true assistant principal responsibilities. It was really just a full-time activities athletic director, you know, some other, I would say, kind of miscellaneous things thrown in. But starting with 1718, we started to transition that position really to more of a, kind of what it is now, the assistant kind of half and half. And that's the way the position remains currently. So what we've been able to see over the last four years in particular, is that this position, which is not unique to Somerset, and I'll talk about that, contains a really high burnout rate. You know, workdays often exceed 13 to 14 hours, starting early in the morning and leaving after the final bus leaves at a basketball game at 10 o'clock at night when the visitors leave, and high turnover. So right now in our conference, Trent is almost the most tenured athletic director in our conference, and he's finishing year three. Because the rate at which this position turns over is at a high rate, due to many of the things that I'm talking about here. We've seen an impact on other positions and other departments within the building. So often, one of these positions or the other, things happen and there's a demand of something that has to happen immediately. And I will specifically kind of take the example of the athletic director piece. There's often things that are timely that have to be done on a certain day, a certain time, and things that come up unexpectedly. And as a result, if this position, and I'll just, I don't want to speak about you like you're not here, but as a result, when those things need to be taken care of, then something else potentially has to kind of be removed or shifted. And often, those things are shifted to other places in the building, because those things are also as timely and things that have to be addressed and maybe dealt with in that moment. So specifically, our counseling staff in particular, so our two counselors, myself and Trent, work very closely together. But often, those things get moved and shifted to other places in the building, because those things can't just also not be done, and specifically, often in that moment and in that time. Inconsistent availability for both roles, so you know, again, at any given day, Trent's going to kind of walk you through what a typical day looks like. If we need something from an assistant principal perspective, that may or may not be available at the time that we need it, based off of some other things that are happening, and vice versa. You know, just two weeks ago, you took an entire morning watching the weather, because we had four outdoor events that were going to happen, and we had a full schedule of things that we were going to tackle and work with. We had classroom visits, we had some student things that were happening, and all of that stuff gets kind of moved and shifted, because that stuff has to be done at that moment, at that time, which impacts, as I said, other departments and students as well. As you're, as I think you're aware, we do have, you know, AD support, you know, through a .5 FTE office aid. So that person is in three days a week. That person also supervises the LMC, which if you've ever been in our LMC, especially during a flex time, is a full-time job in and of itself. And that person also takes on many other building and district level tasks beyond just the athletic department. Again, because of her value, because of her high skill set and lots of the great things that she does. So her day is not simply just dedicated to asking Trent what he needs to have done. Certainly, very helpful, and we're thankful for that help. But at this point, we think that, you know, the need there is now superseded, it's just in terms of starting to look bigger for the system. So Trent's going to just kind of walk you through what a typical day looks like in his world.
I don't want to touch that.
No.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, Shannon, kind of getting to the hat of an APAD. They're in the same building, but really, you're, you're living in two different worlds. And anything that you encounter on a day-to-day basis, if you put on the AP hat, the AD role and responsibilities, those still stay there and continue to go, and a lot of them end up being very timely. You take the AP hat off and put the AD hat on, then you're not available to support teachers, kids, and be in classrooms and doing all those things. So a typical day, and I think it's important to preface this by saying, at any given moment, one of these can really magnify and take the bulk of your time off of your plate. So monitoring and managing student attendance, whether that's mod attendance or daily just kids coming to school and working through those processes. Monitoring and managing student discipline and conflict incidents that occur. And again, we were, work in a building of 14, 15, 16, 17, 18-year-old kids. Some days, that's minimal, and other days and times of year, it fluctuates. It's not a thing that you can put on your calendar and say, okay, on Tuesday from 9:00 to 10:00, we're going to have student discipline issues right there. There's an unpredictability factor, kind of like the weather, as we were talking about earlier. Leading resorted practices, programming, supporting teacher instruction, and being in classrooms, overseeing building safety and security, and collaborating with our school resource officer. And then you put on the AD hat. Daily, you're preparing for athletic events and activities. You're scheduling and getting ready to host different things, not just for that date, but a lot of times, like, we're in the spring right now, and we've already had to have our spring schedules for next spring finished, because that's how far all these things are, and that's not just scheduling the games, that's your officials, that's everything else that goes along with that. Supervising, evaluating coaches and advisors, that's a continuous thing. Coordinating officials, again, not just for that week or month, but you're also having to work a year in advance on those things. Coordinating transportation, overseeing the athletic activities budget, overseeing facility needs and related communication. A lot of times, I may not be the one going out to fix it or address it, but it's communicating with our coaches or people using those facilities, and then working with buildings and grounds on those things as they come up. Maintaining social media communication for athletics and activities, and then obviously, attending and supervising events. That's just on a normal day-to-day basis. That doesn't take into consideration, okay, yeah, you've got weather that fluctuates, and that's just a given with that, but around tournament time, as our teams are preparing to compete, or travel, or advance to state, or if we have the opportunity to host, which we've increasingly done more of, and actually, I haven't checked with either one of you, but I found out today, we're hosting team sectional for wrestling next year, and the boys hockey sectional final again. Basketball hasn't been announced, so those are things that we pride ourselves on being able to do, that occur and fluctuate throughout the year. Any questions on that? I know that was a lot of talking. You'll get this sent to you, so you can see that comprehensive list too.
All right, so if, if this were a split role, what hat would you prefer? I just, if it were a slide on that?
I was about to ask that too. Right.
Specialization of an AD is?
Right, right. And Shannon will get to that too, and they're both unique, because, you know, as an AP, you are supporting teachers and kids and helping raise the bar for student achievement, right? And the AD part, that's, that's an extension of the classroom, and that's, there's a lot of great things that go with that as well, so yeah, you'll, you'll get to that.
Oh, it's a good.
You know where the next, you got that?
Yep.
We, we gathered data just to illustrate how we compare, and we included the Middle Border Conference, and we also included neighboring communities too. But across the Middle Border Conference, we have a breakdown of how many, what they have for FTE for assistant principal roles, but then athletics and activities directors as well. So you can see Amory, they have a split 50/50, similar to what we do. And we have another slide that'll follow this, that'll kind of tell more of that story. Baldwin Woodville, split 50/50. Ellsworth has a full-time high school assistant principal, and then they have a separate full-time athletic director. Hudson, two APs, two dean of students, and then at the athletics, full-time AD with a separate middle school athletic director. New Richmond, two full-time assistant principals, athletic director, full-time, and then they have a separate middle school athletic director. Osceola, their high school, they have a split APAD, but they have a separate middle school athletic director. So their high school APAD only oversees the high school athletics. They have a separate middle school athletic director. Prescott is going to a model lecture where they have a full-time AP and then a full-time athletic director. River Falls is a 2.0 FT for AP, and a 1.0 for athletic director. And then St. Cray Central, at their high school level, they have an assistant principal slash athletic director, but then they have a separate person that's their middle school athletic director. And then, this is just a comparison to kind of tell more of the story as to how we compare with the number of sports we offer in Somerset compared to some of these schools. It's important to note, so we offer 19. As a part of those 19, we host boys and girls hockey. We are the, the host school for that co-op. So while Amory might send kids here for girls hockey, or St. Cray Falls sends here, boys here for boys hockey, we're the host school, so we end up doing the bulk of the work for those sports. We just included a note next to that to show if they have a full-time AD, or if it's a We just included a note next to that to show if they have a full-time AD or if it's a person that's split, separate middle school.
Okay, so, we split this up a little bit, just to give you an idea of, again, kind of our home run in terms of what this would look like regarding some split roles and responsibilities. So, looking at that assistant principal role, being able to assist with instructional leadership, I know this is small, sorry. Katie's...
I can see that all.
Assist with educator effectiveness and evaluations, lead all restorative practice efforts and programming, attendance and truancy, lead coordination of state assessments and AP testing. This is a huge one because our counselors currently do this, which means their counseling offices are shut down for weeks at a time as they are coordinating all of this, which takes, actually, I was almost going to say months at this point, but, so that is a, a big one that we see having a large impact in terms of removing something off of someone's plate. Serving as the administrative liaison to our virtual learning program and our chief program, and then collaborating with the principal and admin team to ensure equitable access to achievement for all students. And then looking at the activities athletic director, overseeing all middle school and high school activities and athletics, overseeing use of management and district facilities, overseeing and developing a budget, and I kind of listed what that entails right there. Scheduling and overseeing all games, events, workers, officials, and transportation. Develop and maintain a coach and advisor handbook, professional development for coaches and advisors, and all required WIAA training. Supervise and evaluate coaches and advisors, and oversee, this is again in our home run, oversee community ed, if at any point we brought that back, and potentially summer school. So, again, being able to kind of give a little bit more, you know, robustness to that role. Okay? So, just a little bit of an FYI for some budgetary things, just again, for your information. So, kind of going back to last school year, Brandon Berry was a, our high school media specialist. He was moved to a district position to be our virtual learning coordinator, and that was an FTE at the high school that we did not fill. And so, as we are kind of thinking about, again, overall FTE in my brain, you know, we kind of have that FTE that was at the high school kind of still sitting out there. You know, looking at the AP position, to get to what you're saying, and Trent can certainly speak to this, but that would be his desired position to remain, or not remain, to be full-time in the assistant principal role. And then taking a look at the athletic and activities director, that could be a teacher on special assignment, it does not necessarily have to be an administrative position. You know, people do it lots of different ways, and I would say there's a high likelihood of both internal and external interest in it for a position like that. We have lots of people, and maybe not lots, but multiple people, I would say, people internal, that, that I know would be interested in a position like that, which would be a nice way to be able to grow, you know, some leadership within our building. So, this was just, as I said, a little bit more FYI in terms of kind of where with that, with that position.
Okay, as a newbie, what is, what is a teacher on special assignment? What's the difference?
So, it would be, basically, think of a teacher, instead of being in a classroom, a teacher would be doing this position. So, it's not an administrative position. It's not something you would need an administrative degree for, you wouldn't need anything like that, you could just be a, a teacher certified in anything to be able to potentially do that position. Good question. Sorry, there was another one.
I'm sorry. Yeah. You're wanting that to be full-time? I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't see. The athletic director. So, you want the AD, AP, and what was there about Brandon?
What was what?
What was there about Brandon?
He had a full-time position that wasn't replaced last year.
Just more of an FYI, so FYI, that when Brandon was at the high school.
Yeah.
And he was a media specialist at the high school.
Yeah.
Brandon left the high school.
Oh, you did not fill that position. I got you.
And, right.
But if I remember correctly, in your perfect world, the new athletic activities director, well, I can't remember, maybe it was the assistant principal. One of them was going to take over the virtual education, right?
So, no, they would be the administrative liaison between that program and working with Brandon. Because there are things that come up where having one particular person designated, it was the assistant principal, one person designated as the go-to person administratively, because Brandon is not an administrator.
Right. So, if you, here's, here's where I, where I struggle, because I know that, you know, if we were to say, okay, let's do the AP full-time and the AD full-time. But somehow then, those positions then change into something else and can turn into something else, you know, where all of a sudden they're going to take on these other responsibilities or, I'm just trying to nicely say this, this is why I like job descriptions. Because then you're, you're committing, you know, you're just committing that these...
I have those.
These are your jobs.
I do.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, this was my version of giving you just an overview of...
Okay.
A job description, but...
Awesome.
In the event, I mean, we just spent last week, just putting together our thoughts of a dream world of, if these two positions were split, it's a, this is the scaled-back version, we've got a full job description of what each of those would be. I just didn't bring it tonight, I, I could've, I just didn't know.
I could just not imagine having that athletic director position, because I think you're just working nonstop. And I totally understand why it's burned out.
Who's the administrative liaison for Brandon Berry now? Yeah.
Well, but he confers with each principal...
Right.
About certain students.
Right.
And how they're, like, if they re-enter or as they come back to the, to the middle school or to the...
Right.
That's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
That's what they're referring to.
So, it sounds like you are suggesting that Brandon would stay in that position. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting anything to do with Brandon Berry. I'm simply...
So, then, instead of the person, instead of Brandon having to talk to you about the stuff, he would talk to the assistant principal about stuff.
So, so here's, yes, thank you. Here's what happens now. It's very fragmented and disjointed based off of which one of us is available. So, then I learn information about a student, and then I'm not available, and then it has to go to him, and then he's not available. Like, we would like to streamline the process for there to be one consistent person to be able to...
But they would still have to go to Seraph if it's a middle school kid, right?
I'm talking about high school students only.
Right.
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Unless you want to fill that position in the middle school, Lori.
Hurt me?
Yeah.
About retirement.
Did you just say you're going to give me an AP?
And I think at the high school, the conversations end up being, I would say, just different than the other buildings, because often, we're talking about credits, we're talking about the implications of, right, there's just, the conversations are just different, right? And so, we have found this year, and that was just one example of many, but we have found this year that there have been fragmented pieces of trying to put it all together when, when I think that he's going to be available, or was going to be him, and is that right? I mean, so, that, I wouldn't get super hung up on, on that too much, that was just one example of, of multiple things that we see that there's a need for.
I thought you were trying to say that you have the funds, I thought it was the, the FTE.
I am saying that.
The money was in this bucket, and now it's, so it's available.
I don't think it's, I think last year, we, one of the things we talked about was, it was a net zero change, because we weren't for the district, and that was just last year. Because we weren't gaining, we were buying another position, but...
Because he was suited over into this other position.
As a district, it was a net, as a high school, technically, it was a loss.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, no, I, I get it.
I've got a few comments on that, but I hope for you, almost.
Almost, I told you, I was gonna, listen, I told you I was going to make sure I was thorough, so you had all the info. Yeah, that I'm coming right now. Okay, so this is it. So, kind of gets where you were asking, Patty. So, for the CTE department, My Perfect World would be posting it as a general CTE position. So, not so tight that it would be business, not so tight that it would be family and consumer ed, that we would post it as a general posting, and then be able to see what applicants we received, to be able to then make some decisions about how some of this would get configured and moved around. And that was in consultation, too, with Jen and Kelly, trying to figure out what would this look like. And I'd probably be pretty clear about my, my home run would be maintaining Trent in the assistant principal position, and then posting for a one-point-oh six-through-twelve activities athletic director. That's my last slide.
Which could be a teacher on assignment.
Yep. Yeah, it, it would not have to be an administrator or an administrative position.
Well, that's, and that was John Walsh, was, he was technically administrative.
Long-term.
Wouldn't you say? I don't hear John Walsh. I don't think he had his administrative license.
He got it during...
Yeah.
Did he get it? But he was...
I mean, are there advantages to that position being, you bet, but would it, would it have to be? No. So. Good?
Yes.
I will send this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, just a, a few pieces about the positions, and just fifty thousand foot, I always worry about how we're going to pay for this. And, you know, and I, I say to the administrative team over and over and over again, you know, when our enrollment's going back this year, it doesn't work to keep adding staff. So, there has to be, we continually talk about reallocating resources, and that's why we have the discussion about class sizes. You know, what's our class size doing in the elementary? What's our programming needs at the high school? You know, we're seeing our numbers drop here, our numbers go here. So, there's some opportunities to try and keep some of this zero-sum if we want to, you know, do something with class sizes in the elementary. Again, just a strategy to do this. The thing I'm, you know, Dave and I both worry about is, you know, our S R money, our state funding, you know, where are we going to be? We're sitting well right now financially, but that can disappear in a hurry by making a few, you know, bad moves. And, you know, just a couple of things I want to throw in here, because we talked about this reading specialist also. And, you know, when I looked, you know, I just did some, some quick work on our district report cards over the last few years. Now, we haven't had anything in the last two years because of COVID, but, you know, we've consistently hit meets expectations or exceeds, we've done pretty good on the state portion of this. But where we're kind of in the middle of the pack is in the middle board conference, our neighbors, where are we stacking up against them student achievement-wise? And what we're finding, and it's on that graph with the class sizes there, you'll see what these different districts, the ones that are stepping way higher than us, have been implementing a process or strategy of instructional coaches. And part of the thing that we're, I'm coming to this now where I see this is a real important strategy to start implementing this is, we can't afford to send people out of the classroom, we own the subs. We have to start bringing the professional development and support into the classrooms now. And that's one of the strategies, you know, at the high school, say Trent was full-time assistant principal, he's in the classrooms offering support. I think we've got an opportunity here, we, we have to bring on this reading specialist in some shape or form. Reading specialist is basically a classroom coach. We put that in position this next year to work that, see how, see how it works. This isn't something that has to be done in one year, but you can see some of the schools our size are, are bringing on two, three, four instructional coaches, again, to bring the support into the classrooms rather than taking the people out of the classroom, sending, sending them elsewhere. So, again, you know, it's, it's a strategy that, you know, I've come around to seeing that, something that we, we should start jumping on. You know, when we design, when we started out with a strategic plan, you know, there was an adage there that we used quite a bit, is that, you know, we're perfectly designed to get the results that we're getting right now. So, if we want better results or different results, we've got to change the way we operate. And again, this is a strategy that, again, from my vantage point, I think the administrative team also, I know from the administrative team, is how can we support classroom instruction onsite better? And again, it's not something we have to jump on right now and go off the deep end on it, but I think it's something that we have to start looking at to bring into the classroom. I've always, you know, whenever we request, whenever any of the principal requested positions or things like this, I've always tried, I've always said, how can we make it cost-neutral? And again, we have that opportunity, again, it's kind of like a water balloon here, you know, we're squeezing our FTEs around, and maybe we have to shuffle people and make some different choices in the different buildings, because again, we're shrinking at the elementary and we're expanding at the top end, so. And that kind of is the theme of this whole thing, how do we meet the needs of, of the district and maintain quality programming? Because, you know, we've always prided ourselves on small class sizes. Tricia, I don't, you know, we, we've had a lot of conversations, I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to add to this. You know, Kathy Cranston talked about it last week on the difference that instructional coaches have made in their district over there.
The one thing I just want to, you know, I've been in the, today was an in-service day, and I was in all three buildings, and today, we really focused on the last part of unpacking, the last part of the new ELA standard. So, I met with the ELA team at the middle school, I met with the high school ELA team, who are fifty percent new next year, again, new hiring there. And they want to start over with ground zero, with bringing on our brand-new ELA resource, because they are going to start brand-new with a brand-new team. So, where do we start with professional development again? And the team leader said, we start from the beginning, again, because it's so important that we have fidelity with bringing on the new resource. The middle school team said, they're compiling a list now that they're, after year one, here's where, where we need help, here's where we need support. How do we do that? I went to the elementary school where they're doing the last part of their unpacking, their eyes are this big because the new math standards have just come out, the draft standards are on my desk right now, the packet is this there. And we're being told to identify the essential standards that we can guarantee each of our students will have before they move to the next grade level. And by guarantee, it doesn't mean kind of sort of most of them will have it. It means what can we absolutely guarantee for our students that we can tell to the next grade level, these students are solid in their understanding? This is just the beginning, and the elementary teachers are like, Trent, we need those Mondays. These Mondays have been extraordinary, and they are doing great work. The really awesome thing is that they've invited me into their classrooms, into their teams, and, and the support that I've been able to give that they have been driving has been wonderful. We need them, we need them back, we need to do this. And I said, we've only been able to do this for two reasons, you know, one, the community support, and two, because we have a waiver that says we don't need the instructional minutes, right? But the weight of the work is so heavy that they don't know how they can do this and keep this pace going into next year. And we know that the sub shortage is real, and we know we can't remove teachers, and they can't do it after school, and they can't do it before school, and the once-a-month day that we have isn't enough to get the work done. So, in the, in the old days, I used to be able to release them, we'd come sit right here, and we would do the work, and we'd write the units, and we'd determine the essential standards, and I would bring in CISA, I would contract with CISA and bring them here, and we would do great work as teams. We can't do that because we can't get that many subs. We can't even cover a day just with who's out. On a normal, we've got the flu sniffles and our kids are home. So, the only way we can really support this kind of work and this kind of feeling good is job embedded professional development, and job embedded work. And the way that happens is by going into the classrooms and supporting that. And that's what instructional coaches do, that's what our reading specialists would do, and that would be moving in to support the work, and then hoping that drives from within, within our PLC teams. So, we just, the other thing we did today was we worked on our last step with equity non-negotiables. Each one of the buildings took the last step, which was identified the nine problems that come out of a system, not our system, but the general system of a deficit-based education program. And this is over years. And from those nine problems came, did the inverse, which has come up with nine equity non-negotiables. And those inverse, the non-negotiables, one of them is that we look at policies, and we make sure we, we examine our policies, and we make sure we put in place policies that, that support a system where all children are getting the rigor that they need at the right time in their education. And one of those policies, it comes right from state statute, and that is that we have a reading specialist that can support our teachers, to support our students, so.
Can you remind me, is that reading specialist district-wide, or was that just middle school?
It is a K-12 reading specialist. Most districts, and, and what I would suggest is that K-12, because we can only really start with one, right? I mean, like, we talk about... I mean, like we talk about, you know, a team of wonderful people, but obviously that is not in the works. But start with one, it's K twelve that would support new E L A standards that are brand new K twelve. But to really support instruction starting at our levels and going up, because we know reading by grade three, right? Reading by grade three, that's what research does. We've got to be reading by grade three. And we already know with the learning loss, many of the districts are using their S R funds to reduce class size so that we can get a reading by grade three. That is an important number to know.
That is, this is, it was actually the reading specialist job that I was thinking of when I said that about the, having the separate athletic director position and then how it will morph into something because we did have our reading specialist and that was supposed to be their job. But then somehow it got shifted over the years to just full time teaching. So, yeah. I want a reading specialist.
I do too.
I do too.
And we too have a job description and two will come to the next four years.
Okay.
You'll all be here for you.
It's not a twenty fourth of approval, right?
I sure hope so.
Check the box.
I sure hope so, for the kids, for the teachers. And actually, when we, I was going to finish real quick, because when we went around all three buildings, I sat in with Sarah's. I tried to attend one of them and teachers went around and put down where we were solid, where we needed to consider change and where we still had ideas or questions circling that need to be clarified. And the word reading specialist came up on that one equity non-negotiable that had to do with policy, where we support policy. So I just wanted to bring that up.
How about math specialist? Is there a math specialist?
That'd be great, but it's not state statute, so it didn't come up. But there are schools that have those too. If you look on that chart, New Richmond has an equal share of both. And they do great work over there. And they just adopted study sync, by the way, the same resource that we have for their middle school. They just finished that adoption, so we can learn alongside them.
Awesome.
Which I'm really thrilled about. That makes our jobs easier when we can do things together.
Well, I see they have math specialists.
Yeah.
Okay, the last, last thing I want to touch base on here is this hiring and retention of staff. And Tricia, I'm going to ask you to jump in here anytime because we've just seen some really crazy things happening in the last couple of months here with people approaching our people, mining data from W C A N to see who's certified in what area and then coming after them. Districts offering bonuses for hard to fill positions.
Bonus.
We lost one person from our high school to that. And so I've had a request, there's a couple kind of pointed things here. I've had a request and he said I could use his name. He didn't, he was not shy about this whatsoever, Eric Olson. And he's in a situation where he's been here a number of years, but he's at the top of his, top of the B A twelve or B A twenty four schedule. And he'll see a one percent raise at best every year going on. It's not worth him, at this point in his career, to, not worth for him to go get his masters. So you saw a little bit on there, all the different jobs he fills here in the district. And he wanted to be classified as a specialty teacher. Now, this is what some districts are doing to recruit people, putting them on a different pay schedule. We have that scheduled here in our, you know, in our new grid down at the bottom. And he's asked, you know, he asked me, can I get placed on it or be considered for that? And I said, you know what, we're going to have a conversation about retention and hiring, you know, this, this Monday. I'll definitely bring it up if you're okay with that. He said, great, you know, see what, you know, see what the thought is. And again, this is just for discussion, it's nothing binding whatsoever. But, you know, if, if he left, which, you know, who knows? To find somebody to fill those positions that he takes, we would definitely be on that schedule to find, to find somebody. That's just how tough that, that is to find. And again, our people are being recruited away. Is there any interest in looking at some of these nuances?
Well, I guess I'd go back to it, can an English teacher be a specialty teacher or a science teacher be a specialty teacher of that category? I don't even know what falls in that category. When I get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that part of the grid, the specialty teacher part of the grid was designed for those who, their position requires a master's degree to start the job. For example, guidance counselors, you cannot be a guidance counselor with a bachelor's degree, you have to have masters. The same with the speech and language pathologist. And so that specialty grid was designed for that class.
I don't recall. I recall it being a hard to fill position.
There's actually two specialty lines.
Okay.
There is what you're saying right there, that's the psychologist line, basically, with what the requirements are. Then there is a line specialty teacher.
Yeah.
And that's a separate line too. We have two of them there.
Okay, I've seen that.
Yeah, no, it's, but again, it was, you know, he said, you know, would you ask about?
So are those two lines the same or different?
No, no, they're different.
Okay.
They're different.
They've been under. Well, I don't have it in front of me.
They're, they're different. And, and again, this is just for thought because, as you say, Bruce, you know, what's the next specialty area? Now, Hudson, I believe it is, they've determined certain positions, like, what is it, special ed?
What I, it's, okay, secondhand, I don't have firsthand knowledge. My understanding, but I'm sure we can find out if someone knows someone, that annually they determine what are hard to fill positions in their district. And then those positions, they get put in a box, is how it was told to me, put in a box. So currently in the box, the person secondhand told me are special ed school sites. That's really all I can speak to.
Oh, I'm guessing tech ed because I'm.
I'm guessing tech ed too, because I did hear recently a brand new tech ed teacher was put at the very top of a pay schedule in a local school district.
And I remember a few years ago, there was.
There are very few of them out there, very few. And, I mean, so a person who, who shared that with me said, and they, so they offer kind of a signing bonus and an annual stipend of three thousand dollars to anyone in the box. So any of those hard to fill positions which are reevaluated annually, get a three thousand dollar stipend if their position is deemed hard to fill. And those positions are annually evaluated.
What if it's deemed no longer hard to fill? Then do they lose that three thousand dollar stipend and go back on the regular schedule?
Yeah, so it's only, it's a, my understanding, again, I have to keep clarifying this because this is secondhand information to me, that it is an annually determined stipend.
And that's why they're not placed on this salary schedule at that amount. It's a separate stipend, so if they're no longer hard to fill.
There's all of a sudden a whole bunch of special ed teachers that just appear out of nowhere.
I would say there's not a lot of science teachers or math teachers.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is there's going to be a shortage of teachers for all the things. So how do we, how would we justify the specialty teachers if there's going to be a shortage of most of the teachers?
We've been very fortunate over the years to pull people out.
I have quite a few applicants for my math jobs.
We really have, we really have.
So I don't want him to give up hope because we could do a whole lift of, you know, so he could get two percent one year. If you lift the whole.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Two percent.
That's me being funny.
He could be two percent every year.
I caught your funny.
Well, see, if you went down, if you went down on the specialty line here, it would basically be a two percent and which would keep, would keep, keep him going. Because he would jump down onto the sixth step and then he'd be able to go through, well, step sixteen on that line, which would keep him going.
I really need to think about this because, you know, we have, and normally when they, when you actually have trouble filling up the wish.
Well, I think if we didn't have him, we'd have a very hard time filling, as Tricia stated.
I know, so I, what I'm saying is I have to work my way through.
I will send this to you. Again, we're just talking in concepts today. I didn't want to burden you with a pile of paperwork, what have you. I just want to let you know what we're faced with here and what's, you know, what's happening in our, in our world with this. We're not asking for any decisions tonight.
Do we get grant funding for Project Lead the Way?
Yes. We, there are, we used to get a lot, that has been phased out, except that there are certain organizations like, like Anne Marie, who is, who used to, but still does, is very liberal with their dollars if they see anything with STEM. So I'm able to get that, those dollars. It used to be a much bigger deal. Nowadays, it's not. There aren't as many grants available. It's much more just STEM initiatives. But Project Lead the Way itself is amazing for our students because if you complete a class and you complete our in-house test, they can get U of M credits, they get credits from St. Cloud or Milwaukee. So it's a wonderful program. And now we just added computer science and we added two classes just recently with Eric and Jen. A lot of dollars invested in the training of those two instructors and Eric actually holds three courses in his name.
Which is another thing I'd like to look at, you know, I don't have the paid grid in front of me. I wasn't prepared for this. But would, because, you know, I remember seeing somewhere, I don't know if it was in the quarterly newsletters or what, reading about Eric going to all this training and sometimes he had to go to Milwaukee for two weeks and.
We have an announcement there.
So I'm wondering if even though he didn't earn a master's degree, he was earning all these certifications to be able to teach Project Lead the Way? Would, how would giving him credit for that towards a master's degree lane, would that be similar to what you're asking with the specialty?
Well, that's what the specialty lane was designed for. It's just making that determination, what is a specialty?
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is if we moved him to the master's lane, give him credit for all that work that he's done, then we don't have to start designating things as specialty, is what I'm asking. And I don't know if it's equivalent or not because I haven't looked.
I know, let me send this out to you. And again, we're just having this discussion right now, send it out to you, see what we think. You know, it's, Eric's not leaving tomorrow, you know, he's not. But he wanted to get the conversation going and that's what we're doing right now. And that's all, send this out so you can take a look at it. And I think the specialty lane is a way to, you know, way to go, put it in there for a purpose. Take a look at it and then we'll have another discussion about that. The last thing I wanted to mention here was in this area of retention and hiring, it's basically in hiring. We need to, you know, you've given me the authority to bring someone at step five and then come back to the board. If we could streamline this, because I've got, I've got a fantastic first science teacher that had seventeen years over in the metro district, got cut because of budget cuts, highly recommended, is willing to take significantly less to come here. But it would be step seven rather than step five on the masters. And, and I would love to give her that to get her, in fact, she's taught, you're.
Nice, Doug.
Yeah. But the process would basically take a couple of weeks to say, oh, you know what, I'll take it to the board and we'll see what happens. And that time, these people are gone. And if we could streamline it by, let's say this person interviews, we have this discussion and, you know, we're this close, but I need a year or two more. If the officers of the board, if I could contact them and they could give tentative approval or denial of that, then I can get right back to them and say, hey, we can do this.
And then you inform the full board?
Right. But it would be the office, if I could send an email off to the officer, hey, here's a lead ad. Are we, are we okay with this or is it way off base?
I don't mind that idea if they get back to you when you guys bring it.
And officers are four, so it would be a majority of the board.
Well, the third, well.
Yeah, but if that's, what if it's a two and two?
We just, we just do the president, vice president and, you know, just keep it at three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clerk. I did just email out the salary schedule to each of you, so each in your email.
So, and in this case, this person, I would, I think with five years, it gives her fifty eight. With seven years, it gives her, I think, sixty, sixty one.
Sixty one.
And again.
Like, I don't, I don't mind that at all.
Well, as long as I get you all here.
Well, the only problem is we did, there was a really qualified teacher earlier in the year that we.
You mean when it went through the board?
She was from the Twin Cities.
The board said no.
And we said no, so what's.
But that was, that was.
You can still do that.
Well, I know, but I'm just, I'm just wondering what the difference is between these two scenarios. Because we, we were pretty emphatic about a no on that one and I just want to understand what the, what we're, what's getting at.
The other person was not willing to come down this far. This person was making seventy eight in her last job and she said she'd take it for sixty.
And I'm thinking, if, what you're thinking of, it's, you know, science teachers, Sarah are, and, oh my goodness, Shannon. I believe science teachers are much more difficult to hire than, for example, an elementary classroom teacher. Is that correct?
Yes, you're right. You're correct.
Okay, so we're not, it's not comparing apples to apples, that is what we're saying.
Not on those two scenarios.
Especially at the high school level when they have to be certifying chemistry and biology and physics.
And I think too, this is almost double, I think, the years of experience too.
Yeah.
Agree, there's exceptions to the rule.
So just as long as I have you here, are we okay with this person going up that higher step?
Oh, you're asking us all since we're here.
Well, as long as we're here, I don't want to lose this person.
I will not object.
I don't want to lose this person.
I would not object.
But in, in the future, if we, three officers, if something comes up.
That's reasonable.
So far, we've been able to keep everyone under five steps. That's all I have. I just, you know, I wanted to have a great discussion like this here, so new people really can kind of see some of the things we're dealing with. We'll sharpen up some of these different areas, get some more information out to you and, yeah.
So, so with Shannon and Trent's presentation request, is that something that's going to bring, get brought to us for a discussion in June? Or are we having Dave run some numbers? Are you having a discussion?
That's what has to happen. I'm concerned about how we're going to pay for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I want to have a solid strategy before I bring it to you for, say, hey, here's, here's what it is so I can say, well, here's how we're going to do it. And that, if you can see, that's how this conversation of class size is tied in. Because again, if we, you know, if we're playing hearts, we're the short suit, that's a little bit of a different suit. So if we're readjusting our alloc, you know, reallocating our resources here, move here, how are we going to do that?
So you're, you're basically going to go through this discussion, come up with some.
Right, a game plan on, but you needed to hear all this.
Yeah, I get it. I just wanted to know if Dave was going to be.
I'm sorry I took away a beautiful Monday night, but I wish we could do these every quarter to talk about things.
Can I just ask one more question? So on the overloads, Shannon, that you talked about, so the two, Jen and Kelly that are currently receiving overloads, that means that they're okay with reducing their classes and taking a, a drop in pay, basically? Am I not understanding the overload right?
No, you are. And my understanding is they are so overworked and overwhelmed that, yeah, they'd like to work one full time job instead of one and a half.
So they're willing, they're willing to take a decrease in, in pay?
The overload for them is a, is not a permanent all time fix. It is what they have volunteered to do to get us through without having to reduce a bunch of classes. They cannot and will not maintain this pace.
Right, so were those stipends then? Like they were just paid stipends to pay up to? I'm just trying to make sure that they're okay with taking less money now.
Well, we approve it, I think, every year because on the.
It's their F T E. So if they're overloaded, instead of being a one point oh, they're like a one point two five or a one point three.
I'll get it. Okay, so they're okay with going to a one point oh?
I'm here because they aren't going to make it much longer.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yes.
So it looks to me like, again, I'm a, I'm a recap person. So C T E, the C T E, the addition to the C T E is well within what we've been, I mean, under what we've been paying for Jen and Kelly to have overloads.
No. No.
No, no.
Well, the overloads were fifty-three thousand.
Well, that was a cumulative of five years.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay.
They're basically around fifteen.
Thirteen dollars.
Sorry. Okay, I misunderstood that. But still, I mean, we still have money left over for not paying them overloads. Plus four hundred to five hundred dollars per student if we, if they can enroll in the youth apprenticeship program, right?
And you had a little note down there that said part of that money can be used for benefits?
Yep. So as I said before, some districts fund FTE out of that department solely out of youth apprenticeship.
I think.
I'm not indicating in one year we could get there, but that would be the goal, right? You've got that many kids in there that you can apply salary fringe from that grant. Yep.
I think today, youth apprenticeship, just the quick, sorry, I was Googling while you were talking to us. Well, it, it looks like there's a, obviously there's programs you'd have to reach out to certain places that would even do it, like you said. So I think if we had somebody who could actually reach out and say, that might help increase those numbers, I would, I would hope if we'd be able to say, hey, let's work with X, Y, and Z to increase that. That would be my goal.
And then the AD could potentially be a teacher on special assignment, which, I don't know, I'm sure you guys have plans for running the numbers on how creative we can get there. And then a reading specialist, a science teacher that we've already budgeted for, right? I mean, because we have to have a science teacher, right? Am I right there? And then talking about the specialty teacher option for Eric Olson. Is that, are those the main things we're talking about? Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Do we have a science teacher at high school or middle school?
Middle school.
It's a replacement.
We'd get a, we'd be making money on that anyway.
Correct. It is a replacement of, yes, yes.
That's a good point, Bruce.
And what the youth apprenticeship, can they cross the border? Can they do it in Minnesota? Does it have to stay in Wisconsin?
I believe it has to stay in Wisconsin. Is it not too? Wisconsin, Maria has not funded.
I thought that too.
Okay, thank you for that.
You got it. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I'm glad that we had the special session because I think we just spent like two and a half, what, two hours. I can't imagine doing this during, with everything else in a regular meeting. Can you, Katie?
No. I will move to adjourn.
So motion by Katie, second by Patty Jo. All in favor?
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-five. Thank you.